Thank you so much for coming down on your Thursday night to talk about some really important things that are integral that we have these conversations about schools and thank you everybody for coming down and enjoying some of the shack food. I'm Caitlin McCabe, I'm the Vice President of the Marymount Association. If you haven't been here before, this is our lovely beach and we use it a lot. There are some great events here, including this one which is the third and final Meet the Candidates event that we'll be holding here at Marymount and it's for the school committee candidates. The quarter that they will speak in is chosen randomly and randomly Anthony was chosen and he's actually not here tonight, so we'll go on to our second person which is David Jacobs. And you can come on over. The way that this will work is they'll have 10 minutes, the 10 minutes is pretty much yours, you can speak the whole time or you can open it up for questions. I do have one submitted question, but I also have some other questions that are good too, so feel free to speak up to 10 minutes. I'll stand back here and when you have four minutes, I'll wave at you, okay?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Jacobs and I want to thank you all for coming out here tonight, it's a beautiful night. Caitlin's probably saying, "Yeah," I kept texting her, "Is it gonna rain, is it gonna rain?" Of course it's beautiful outside. I just want to thank, again, thank you all for coming out, thank all the other candidates who are running for school committee. It is a very difficult task to go out day after day, knock all those doors, and I really respect all the other candidates for taking time away from their family. Hey, sweetie, for taking their time away from their family to do this. It is very important. But I grew up here in Quincy, in Howesneck. I attended Quincy Public Schools, I went to the Athan Howe School, went for elementary school. But when I was young, I was identified as having a learning disability and I attended the Head Start Program at Sung Harbor. And after two years of pre-kindergarten there, it was decided that I would be best to be educated in a sub-separate educational setting, so I spent a year in a separate first grade classroom where I was educated along, you know, with the help of my family and, you know, early teachers. I was mainstream when I was in first grade again. And I have a twin brother who's around here somewhere and he was in second grade, so everyone would always say, "Why are you guys in different grades?" But, you know, I continued my education at Athan Howe, went there, you know, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. I received special education services there, right up until I went into high school. I actually attended Quincy High for two years and I attended North Quincy High for two years, so I'm that lucky candidate that gets to say I went to both high schools. But, you know, when I was in middle school, I really had great teachers, general ed teachers and special education teachers, and I decided then that I wanted to become a teacher myself. But I didn't know exactly what I would ever teach. But when I was in middle school, I really started to like social studies. And when I was in eighth grade, I actually started to volunteer at the Adams National Historical Park, some of you have probably been there, the Adams Mansion. And while I was there, we started a really popular program called The Spirits of Quincy, we used to do it on Halloween, if anybody ever been to the Hancock Cemetery. They don't do it anymore, but we did that for a long time. But in 2005, I graduated from North Quincy High School, I went to Salem State University and because I had been volunteering for the National Park Service for so many years, I was able to actually get a job working for the National Park Service, which was great because all my friends were working at McDonald's and all that fun stuff when I was working, you know, for the government, so I thought it was pretty cool. I worked at the Saga Zion Works and the Salem Maratime National Historic Sites for about four years, I did tours and education programs there. When I graduated from college, it was 2009, and the market really wasn't great, a lot of people couldn't find jobs. But luckily, I had already been working for the Park Service for a long time and I was able to get a job out in South Dakota. And I worked at the Badlands National Park and Mount Rushmore National Memorial for six months. From there, I went to Nebraska, lived in Nebraska for a couple of months, and then I actually went to Florida, to the Dry Tortugas National Park, Fort Jefferson, which is west of Key West, if there is such a thing. It was a five-hour boat ride to get there. But after doing that, I decided I was going to try and go back and pursue a higher education degree, so I went to Salem State and I got my graduate degree in middle school humanities and graduated there in 2013. And while I was there, I had the ability to continue working for the National Park Service at the Adams National Historical Park. And while I was there, I was the education coordinator, so I coordinated all the education programs for the elementary school kids, not just here in Quincy, but all over the state. We had a school that came every year from California to participate in that pen and parchment program they had there, and some of you may have gone through it on the Fourth of July, they do it at the Adams, so that's a really well-run program, that's known all across the United States. But when I graduated in 2013, I started to work in the Boston Public Schools. My first job there, I was a substitute teacher at the Lee School and I worked in a special education, a sub-separate autism strand. The following year, I was a paraprofessional in that strand. And the following year after that, I taught, I was a classroom teacher, I taught seventh and eighth grade special education, I taught science. Following that, I actually spent a year teaching high school science in Boston, and for the last two years, I've been working at the Roosevelt School in Hyde Park. When I was going to school in Quincy, when I was in high school, there were a lot of budget cuts. And a lot of people would go to the school committee meetings and get up and talk about why their programs were important. My parents were both up there, as well as many of my friends' parents. And the program that was most, that I was most interested in when I was in high school was, I was instrumental, you know, I played in the band. And when I was in high school, there were five instrumental teachers in Quincy, and by the time I graduated from high school, there were two. And it was all because of the budget cuts. So when I came back here in 2000, when I graduated rather from Salem State in 2013, had a little bit more time on my hands, there was a group of parents in the Quincy Public Schools who were trying to start, trying to start a nonprofit, which became known as the Quincy Band Boosters. It's a registered 501(c)(3) charity, and I've been involved with the Quincy Band Boosters since 2013. And what we basically do is we hold fundraisers and we raise money to give back to the instrumental program. We raise about $10,000 to $15,000 a year, and with that money, we have paid for private lessons for students who've been, you know, who need additional help in their instrument. We have purchased jackets, music, we pay for field trips, buses, and things like that. So, you know, I've been involved here in Quincy as well. How many of you are familiar with the new Sterling Middle School that's going up? Well, that was about, oh, I see, Courtney's here, about six years ago, we had our first community meeting about it, and I think that's when I actually first met Courtney, or was that the gym? But, so we had our first community meeting, and there were a lot of parents, I live in West Quincy now, and the parents of Quincy Point who were upset with the grade configuration that was at Point Webster and Sterling, those schools go five to eight, and when the new Sterling was being constructed, they wanted to make it a grade configuration four to eight. And at the community meetings, they sold it to us, that it was gonna be great, you know, we'd keep the fourth and fifth grade separate, they'd never see the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And most of the questions were about, "Well, if it's so great, why are we spending so much time separating the kids, you know, from their peers, all have separate entrances, separate start times?" So what we ended up doing was starting a petition, and we went around, I went around door to door, I know Courtney went around door to door, it was online, and we got signatures to prevent or to help stop the construction of the four to eight middle school. And that is what happened, the Massachusetts School Building Authority said that they were not interested in building a four to eight because there was no community support, you know, for a four to eight building, that's why it's gonna be a five to eight. So, that's just a little about myself, the things I've been involved in here in Quincy. You know, I think I have all the right skills, I have the experience being in the classroom, I have the experience being involved in the community to be one of the next members of the Quincy School Committee. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you have, are you gonna ask some questions?
If you have some, there-
If anyone has questions, yeah, I can take questions.
All right.
Well, there is one?
What's your biggest concern or target project if you were to join the school committee to improve the public service?
Well, one of the things I'd really like to see is, again, I was really, and still am really passionate about the school configuration here in Quincy, because I live in West Quincy, so if I, I do not have children of my own, but if I did, they would attend Lincoln Hancock Sterling and then Quincy High School. And I wouldn't want my kid, you know, going to a fourth grade, you know, at a middle school, and that's one of the reasons why I joined the petition effort with Courtney to start that. But I would like to see the grade configurations kind of solidified. You know, we are building a new Sterling Middle School, is gonna be five to eight, the parents over there would like to see the fifth grade put back in Lincoln Hancock. The city is in the midst of purchasing another building here in Quincy, the old St. Mary's School, to either be an elementary school or an early learning center, I've heard both, right? But I would like to see some forethought with the purchase of that building to try and make an effort to move the fifth grade back into the elementary school at Lincoln Hancock. That would be one, I mean, along with all my other committee members, that would be one thing I would definitely ask.
Thanks, Dave. All right, we're just gonna move right along so we don't get caught in the dark. Emily Levo is next up. Let's see her. Oh, there she is. I'll stand back there and when you see my clipboard, that means five more minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Marymount Association for having this event tonight. I feel like I've come home because I spent so much time in Marymount over the past several years, as I have lots and lots of family. I want to tell you very briefly, I think most of you know me, but I'm gonna tell you a little brief history of my, how I grew up. So I am a registered nurse and I worked, was working at Boston City Hospital, and my youngest son, who's the big tall guy in the back there who goes now lives in Marymount, was going to kindergarten and I was working three to eleven, and I said, "What the heck? They're coming home from school and I'm going to work." So at that point in time, I decided I'd like to try school nursing. So I went from the ICU at Boston City Hospital to school nursing in the age when a school nurse couldn't give Tylenol or do anything. And it was culture shock. So I lasted about five days as the school nurse, and then somebody tapped me on the shoulder and said, "Would you be willing to teach nursing at the high school?" And I thought, "What's the best of both worlds? I love nursing and, I love nursing and I can also impart that knowledge to other people." And there are actually two people in the audience here, who are students of mine are in the program that I ran at Quincy High School. So I ran the allied health program and the early childhood education program, and whenever I'm in the city of Boston, used to be Quincy, but even in the South Shore Hospital, I see folks that have come through my program in the past few years, still working in allied health in various places and still working in education. Several of our graduates are working in the Quincy Public Schools as teachers. So it's been a very, very enriching opportunity for me to be able to teach. I did that for eight years, 12 years, I'm sorry, and then I became the Director of Career and Technical Education for Quincy Public Schools. And while I was there, I not only modernized most of the programs, but I also put in some new programs and I also brought the first Lego League, first robotics program to the high schools, and I put the first Lego League robotics into all the middle schools in Quincy, which is still flourishing today, still, tons of middle school kids are in first Lego League and the robotics program is still beautiful. As a matter of fact, those two programs have expanded the high school requests for engineering, so we now have two engineering programs, one at each high school, that are direct results of the feed of those programs that came up. So I'm really proud of that. While I was at Quincy High School, I also started the Quincy Evening High School Program. We had a significant dropout problem in Quincy, the dropout rate was 4.9%, and it was well above the state average, and the superintendent said to his leadership team, "We need to do something about this." So I went and looked at the graduate dropouts and I realized that all of the dropouts, almost all of them had passed the MCAS, the dreaded MCAS, which you can't get out of high school without, they had passed that and they were still dropping out of high school. And it was, these kids were just completely disenfranchised. We all know them, we all have kids like that in our families, they just don't wanna take off their hat, they just don't want you to tell them that they have to take a course they don't wanna take because they don't need it, or they just have a couple of courses they need to make up to get their diploma. And we were losing these kids, lots of kids. So I started that program with a grant from the state about 10 years ago. The program is still running, still on a grant from the state, and has graduated hundreds of kids that would have been the drop, would have been dropouts. And our dropout rate is now 0.9 in the city, so it had a significant impact, it really did. So I'm very proud of that. After I became the Director in Quincy, I joined the Board of Education Advisory Committee for Career and Technical Education, and that gave me access to career and technical education programs across the state. And one of the things we did is we put in statewide articulation agreements so that students and schools would not have to navigate and negotiate that by themselves. So I worked with a team of people from the community colleges and the career and technical education world, and we put statewide articulation agreements in every single junior college in a community college in the state, so kids can get those credits right away. I also testified several times to the legislature about special needs issues and CTE issues. When I went to Boston, besides doing the career and technical education, I became in charge of all the students who needed to transition, which means students between the ages of 18 and 22 who are non-diploma bound and needed some assistance moving on to the next phase of their life. So I worked with those students, probably was the joy of my life to work with those students, and we made sure that they had some employability skills and also some social skills and life skills so that they could move on to the next phase of their life. And so many of those students go on and do great things to, given the right opportunity. When I got to the school committee, the first thing that I realized was that I was, like at my second meeting, and we were having this meeting, we were talking about lots of stuff, and I was looking at the subcommittees, and the subcommittees were safety and security, policy, transportation, health, nothing really that I wanted to do, to tell you the truth. So I said, "We don't have a, somebody that looks at teaching and learning?" And the superintendent said, "No." "What do you mean?" I said, "Like a subcommittee that looks at teaching and learning." So I started the first subcommittee on teaching and learning, which has done, and it's not all my work, believe me, my colleagues on the school committee, and actually, I want to recognize Kathy Hubley's here. Kathy's not looking, but she is here. Kathy Hubley, my colleague from the school committee. The work that's done on that committee is incredible. They look at every school, every program, all the data, what the outcomes are, they look at the assessments, they look at, they review curriculum with the curriculum department, and they, the amount of work on that committee is phenomenal, but they do a great job of it, so it's really, really, really exciting. The other thing I did when I was first on the school committee, money was just coming back after the horrendous cuts we took in the, five minutes? The horrendous cuts we took in 2008, money was just starting to come back, and I said to the superintendent, "We need to get the libraries back in the middle school," and he said, "Ah, libraries? They don't do anything but check in books and check out books." And I have a daughter-in-law who's also here, who's a librarian, and she told me the exciting stuff she was doing in her school in California, and I said to her, "Are you crazy? That's not what librarians do." So Mary suggested that I go over to Simmons and talk to the people there. So I went to Simmons College because they have a master's program in library, in library science, and I went to, so I went to Simmons College and I said, "Where can I find the best middle school libraries, because I'm gonna bring the superintendent?" And they said, "Go to Newton." So I took the superintendent on a ride and drove over to Newton and we visited two of their middle school librarians, and he was blown away. And I want to tell you that right now, we have middle school librarians in all of our schools. So that's, thank you to Mary Rug, Levo, and also thank you to the superintendent. And I'm telling you, thank you. The libraries are a phenomenal need in our schools and they do great things with the kids around the media, access and stuff, they really do a really good job. So that's one of the other things that I'm really, really proud of. This is a small thing I'm gonna tell you about that I insisted upon, I really drove the superintendent crazy on this one, but he, he came around without a lot of, with not a lot of pressure. And Quincy Public Schools has thousands of employees. The city of Quincy is a great employer. I want everybody here to hear that. If you work for the city of Quincy, you get a pension. You get a pension if you work for the city of Quincy. You retire from the city of Quincy, you get a pension. There's not too many places you can get that anymore. It's a great employer. The problem was in Quincy that you couldn't know, you didn't know if there was any jobs available. I'm not talking about the teaching jobs, they're all posted on school spring, you need a, you need a license to get those jobs, but there are more than a thousand jobs in clerical work, in custodial work, in paraprofessional work, and the paraprofessionals do some great education work. No jobs have ever been posted anywhere in the city of Quincy. None of those jobs are posted. I said, "How do people get those jobs?" Word of mouth. So if you work there, you tell people that jobs open, they get the job. There was nothing ever posted, nothing. Well, I want you to know that two weeks ago or three weeks ago, all the jobs are posted on the Quincy Public Schools website for any employment that's available in Quincy Public Schools. So our, our residents of the city can apply for it and get those jobs. That's not true on the city side, so the next time you talk to the city councilors, you might want to push that, push that agenda right away. As I said, I'm invested. I have six grandchildren who will be attending the Quincy Public Schools, two starting next week, four started this week, at four different schools. They're in the, they're in the background, my sons all went to the Quincy Public Schools and their children are going, and we now have cousins, baby cousins, so we're still very, very invested. So we have a three-month-old, four-year-old, and then the other kids are a little older. Tommy's at Broad Meadows. So as I said, I think you guys know me because I've been around here, hanging around Marymount Park. As a matter of fact, if I have one more minute, I want to say one more thing. I was at a fundraiser, an ice cream social I was doing, it wasn't a fundraiser, at Southern Otry, and a woman came up to me and she looked at my brochure. I thought she wanted to tell me how great-looking my grandkids were. She pointed at this picture. She said to me, "Where did you take that picture?" I said, "Oh, Marymount Park." And she said, "Oh, my name is Mumfred, Mumfra..." Her husband opened the shack first, Mafredi, Mafia-
Muscadelli.
Yes. And she said, "My husband was responsible for opening the shack several years ago," and she knew Mary's grandparents, Warren and Warren Rug and his wife.
Nancy Muscadelli, is she still alive?
No, she died. Mafredi, Mafredi.
Mafara.
Mafara, oh, that's right. She said, "It sounds like Mafia." That's what she said to me. She said, "They'll know me, it sounds like Mafia." So her husband was instrumental in starting the shack, and what a great lady she is. So she was so excited by the picture, not so much the kids, but by the tree, I don't know how she recognized it because it's not that, it doesn't look that clear to me. But anyway, so I'm hoping to get back on the school committee. I love the work, I am the most experienced person, I'm a licensed teacher, I'm a licensed administrator, I'm a licensed nurse, but I am seriously, I love the work, I'm completely committed to it, I am a career educator, not a career politician. I'm not good at politi, politi, I'm not good at campaigning, but I've been walking the streets, knocking the doors, dropping the leaflets, talking to as many people as I can, I'm very, very approachable. The teachers approach me all the time, I work very well with the teachers in Quincy, having been one, I love the teachers in Quincy, and having been a parent and now a grandparent and a grandaunt, I'll be, I'll be doing as much work for you as I can. So I appreciate your vote, your consideration for a vote.
Thanks so much, Emily. All right. Next, we have Mark Soder. I just want to point out that it is Mark's birthday, and that's dedication. We would say it's dedication, but he actually set this date, so he purposely is here to talk to you on his birthday. Here you go.
All right. Thank you, Caitlin. Yes, we can do a happy birthday afterwards. I don't want to take up my 10 minutes for that. So thank you, Caitlin, for organizing and hosting tonight. Thank you, everyone, for coming down here. I know this might not be as exciting as the Patriots tailgate right now, but, you know, it's important that everyone's here, so we'll be home in time to watch the game tonight. Thank you to my fellow candidates for being here also. And just want to tell you a little bit about me. My name's Mark Soder. As many of you probably know, I do live in Marymount and I am the President of the Marymount Association. And I have two young kids, Frank, who is gonna be one in September, later this month, and Maely, who is gonna be three in October. So them right there are probably the two greatest reasons why I'm running for the school committee. I want to make sure that the school system continues to remain strong and provides the best possible education opportunities for my children, but also for all the children all across Quincy. So I think that my leadership, my community leadership background, my fresh ideas and perspective, also my legal background and my dedication to public service all qualify me well for a position on the school committee. So my main reason here, running for the school committee, is I have just an incredible desire and commitment to improving Quincy for everyone. And I've been fortunate enough to be the President of the Marymount Association for the past four years. I've gotten to know many people here through that. But I've also had experience as the President of the Marymount Association with community engagement, working with city and state officials on issues of neighborhood concern, fiscal management, we've got a budget, you know, of over $15,000, which I think is the most of any of the neighborhood associations in the city, so it is a significant amount of money that we've got to manage. I have experience working collaboratively with the board that we have on the association, so I think all of those experiences would help me on the school committee. As many of you know, I've been very involved here, doing the July 4th parade, neighborhood cleanups, meet the candidate nights, festivals, races, you name it, we do it down here. And it is a lot of work, and I need to thank my wife Leah for permitting me and allowing me and supporting me to get that involved, but she knows how important it is to me because there's so many great traditions here in Marymount, and we want to keep those traditions strong for the future generations. And I look at the school committee very similar to that. We have great schools here in Quincy, we've got great teachers, we've got great programs, and I think the role of the school committee is to make sure that we keep moving forward with those, make improvements where we need to make improvements, but really to maintain the great system that we have already. So that would definitely be my goal on the school committee. You know, I also think that it's important for the school committee to be well-rounded, to have members of diverse backgrounds. So I think it's great that we have former educators on the school committee now. I think it's great that we have a member on the school committee who recently graduated from high school in Quincy, that that offers a good perspective. I think it's great we have a school committee member, Kathy Hubley, who has high school-age kids. I think that's great also. What I think we're missing on the school committee is a parent of younger children. We've got all these young families moving into Quincy and they're all bringing their kids, and they want, they have issues of educational concern, and I think that I can definitely represent those young children and young families in addition to all the other kids going through the school system. But I think that I can offer that perspective, and I will on the school committee. I think what I also bring to the school committee is a history and track record of fresh ideas and fresh perspective, and that might be because I'm not originally from Quincy. I haven't lived here my entire life, I don't have family that traces back generations here. But sometimes that's helpful, sometimes it's good to have someone with an outside perspective. I'll give you an example of where I think that I've brought that. Many of you know the Saturday morning gym programs that the Quincy Rec Department runs in the winter. It's a great program. When I had our daughter last year, two years old, absolutely stir-crazy Saturday mornings in the winter, said, "Well, this is great, we can go to the Saturday morning gym program." I checked it out and realized that it's for kids eight years and older. I said, "Well, that makes no sense, we've got all these kids under eight years old in the city." So I contacted the rec director, brought up this idea to open up something for Quincy's younger students, or younger children. I didn't really get much of a response from him, so I said, "Well, you know what? I'm gonna start a petition. I'm gonna research what other cities around Quincy do and realize that those cities offer programs for younger children in the winter." So I put my research together, put an online petition together, we had over 400 signatures, that got the rec directors' attention very quickly. So we started a program, it was called Quincy Tot Time, and it was a great program, they started it as a pilot program and then they extended it all the way into the early spring. So that's just an example of what a fresh idea, a fresh perspective that I bring and that I think that I can bring to all the students in all the schools across Quincy. So one of the other reasons I'm running for school committee is as a fellow public employee, I have great respect and admiration for the hard-working employees of the Quincy school system. I'm an attorney for the federal government. My mother, she was a teacher and a guidance counselor. My father, he's an attorney who represents public teacher unions. So from them, I definitely learned of the great value and importance of public education and I've just got a great respect for those, for those individuals, and I pledge that I will always support our hard-working teachers, make sure they have the necessary compensation and resources to successfully guide our children. So I do think also my legal background would be helpful on the school committee. We are losing the one attorney who's on the school committee, and I think it is important to have someone with a legal education and background to analyze some of the complex problems and issues that come up in the school system. So currently, I work for the Department of Homeland Security in Boston for Immigration Customs Enforcement, and so that's what I do for my day job, but definitely have an interest in using those legal, my legal background and legal skills on the school committee. So what would I like to accomplish if I get onto the school committee, if I'm so fortunate? Well, I've got a whole list of issues that are over on my table over here, they're on my website also, but I'll just tick through a few of them. One of the main things that I see for the students in Quincy is the need to make sure that we have updated and expanded our substance abuse curriculum, our outreach programs, our counseling to help combat the opioid epidemics that has hit our city and the entire state very, very hard, so I want to make sure that we're doing all we can on that. I'd also like to expand pre-K for our youngest students here in Quincy. For our elementary students, I'd like to bring recess back into the picture. Recess has been cut from so many- Recession's been cut from so many schools, and that's something that's so important for our young kids to be able to get out and play and learn those skills, and that helps them focus the rest of the day. At the middle school level, one thing that I'd be very interested in adding is Chinese Mandarin to the foreign language offerings. Right now, we only have Spanish and French. I think Chinese Mandarin is an incredibly important language in our city, in our region, and now in the entire world with it being such a strong language on the international business level. At high school, I want to make sure our students that are graduating and going to college are as prepared and have as much financial knowledge as possible before they go off to school and before they become, have so much student debt. The student debt that we have as, for college students right now is just astronomical. And to help with that, I'd like the city of Quincy to fund a scholarship program for graduating seniors. The city of Boston does something similar to this. They partner with corporations and individuals to bring a fund of money together. I think that would be something great for our city to do as well. So those are some of the main issues that I see. One thing I've also heard from numerous people across the city is the need to increase and update communication from the school committee to parents and to students, and also from the individual schools to parents and students. That's something that I would like to see. I'd like to see an updated website from the Quincy Public School website, make something a little bit easier for parents to find information that is important to them. So I have a whole host of other issues that I'd love to get into if I'm elected to the school committee. So I'm going to close now. I want to thank everyone again for coming out here. I think Quincy is a city that has just an amazingly rich history, and I think that it has a bright future as well, as long as we continue to invest in our schools, in our students, and in our teachers, and that's my plan if I'm elected to the school committee. So thank you all very much.
Next up, we have Geraldine Manning. We're doing great on time. We're going to get a job here before we're sitting in the dark. 10 minutes. I'm going to stand in the back. When I wave my clipboard, that means you've got five minutes. You can talk the whole time if you want, or you can take some questions.
Okay. My name is Geraldine Manning, and I'm going to talk tonight about why I'm running. I'm nervous. This is my first run for public office, but it's out of a real need. I really think that the community needs to be aware of the efforts going on in terms of, in the states, that we need to update our educational curriculum to match other states. We need to do this because without this, our students are not getting a full education. I'll tell you a little about my background, then I'll go into this. I was a professor, a full-time professor at Suffolk University, and I was on, God knows, 14 different committees. You know, I worked hard, and then when it came time for retirement, I was watching the television, and I said to myself, "Oh, my God, the school committee is not discussing education for the 21st century." And so I said to myself, geez, I'm going to run, and I'm going to bring up this issue because without this, kids are really going to get, you could say, gypped. You could say they're not going to have the access to good jobs and careers. That's just the truth. And I was a Quincy student, and I thought, well, shall I talk about, you know, I want to give back to Quincy? Yes, I do, but it's out of a real problem. So as I watched the school committee, I thought to myself, they need to be aware of making changes and discussing changes in the curriculum. Generally, we're talking about, for most students, they will either feel that their school didn't give them what was necessary, or that they're left behind. I'll talk about some of the issues. An entire generation will fail to make it in the global economy because they can't either think their way through abstract problems, distinguish good information from bad information. They have a lot of information that comes flying at them, but they have no idea what the quality of that information is. And they need to speak a language other than English. Sadly, the situation in most high schools in America is that they shy away from foreign language. They think, "Oh, God, I'm not going to take that." Well, they need to, and we need to push that. They need to know more about the world. If you ask a student a geography question, you will get a look of, "I just don't know." Well, you need to, to function in this society. And to function well as either a businessperson or a leader in the world, you need to know a great deal about geography. You need to know a great many foreign languages. The more you know, the better. We need also to reform social science education, because most social science education is focused on the United States. They need to know a lot about the world because they're graduating at a time when they're in competition with the world. And they need to understand that. They need to be able to also think outside the box. That used to be a United States strength, that generally people could think outside the box. But now, given the emphasis on teaching to the test that they have to take in Massachusetts, they're much more rigid in what they learn, and they don't do much thinking outside the box. They also need to think across disciplines. They need to learn that there are some things in art and mathematics that relate. There are some things in design and technology that relate. So kids need to know also what's useful and reliable information. They don't have that. And they need to also develop good people's skills. I can't tell you how many kids have said to me that they're scared to talk to an adult face-to-face. They need to get over that. We need to practice with them, or we need to shut their cellphones off so that they have an opportunity to practice communication skills. It's very sad, but it's all fixable. The good news is, and there is some good news, there are three foundations who are putting a tremendous amount of money in this because they're US-based foundations, and they realize that the future's coming awfully fast. The Melinda and, what's his name? God help us, Bill Gates Foundation. Also, the Carnegie Foundation is providing... This is at the millions of dollars level. It's not any small amount they're investing because they realize that our students, we really need to help them change so that they can change as well. The other group is the Asia Society. They're putting forth millions of dollars, and that's good news. And my question is, why aren't we talking about this? This should be the main item on the agenda of the school committee. I understand, and I'm a sociologist, I understand that the opioid crisis is a problem. Yes, somebody can take that on the school committee, but the big effort has to go for preparing these kids for the 21st century. I don't have a table over there, given that this is my first time running, but I do have cards that I wrote out this afternoon if anybody needs to know my name and what I'm running for. Thank you.
Thanks, Geraldine. All right. Last but certainly not least is Doug Guttrow, and you know the drill. I'll stand back there. Do you want a two-minute warning? All right. There you go.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Caitlin. First of all, let me say, this year in particular, city of Quincy is blessed with a terrific crop of candidates, not just for school committee, but councillor-at-large and several of the ward races. We're seeing some real democracy in action here, and it's a terrific thing, I think, for the health of the city, to demonstrate the health of the city. And so I credit Caitlin and the Marymount Association with hosting these events, and I know this is the third that they've hosted. But I want to give a special shout-out to Mark Sauter, because Mark is the president of the Marymount Association, and he indicated for the last four years. And the reason I want to do that is because 20 years ago, I was the president of my own neighborhood association, Ward Five Community Association, down in Wallaston, and I know what it takes to pull together events. And you all have an incredibly thriving neighborhood that, in large part, is defined by the neighborhood association. So credit to Mark and Caitlin and all the members of the association for doing all of the work that it takes to make this a healthy, thriving, successful neighborhood in the Many of you know me, of course, because I've been around on the city council for many years, and I'll get into my bio in a second, but I've been to many events down here. I've been to everything from the horseshoe tournament to the duck races with my kids to many a parade that you have every year, which is a terrific event here in Squanam, do the wonderful parades. And I firmly believe that the strength of a city is defined by its neighborhood, and the city of Quincy is blessed with amazing neighborhoods, and Marymount is just one of those neighborhoods. I also want to acknowledge that the strength or the centerpiece of every neighborhood is usually a community school. And we have the Marymount School steps from here, and we're fortunate enough to have illustrious principal, Mrs. Peg, over here, who's engaged in... How about a round of applause for Mrs. Peg? So we have 11 elementary schools, five middle schools, and two high schools, and we have a pretty talented team of administrators that run our public school system, as many of the candidates said. Mrs. Peg is an example of that. And one of the things that I'll be dedicated to is keeping my finger on the pulse of what's happening in the neighborhood schools. And one of the first things that I did after I announced that I was running this spring was I went to the PTO meeting in Marymount. And it's my expectation, not just in election year, but every year, to visit each of the schools, and meet with the PTOs and Citywide PTO. I see Courtney Purdeyos is here, who's co-chair of Citywide PTO. You know, these are the organizations that make a difference in the lives of our kids throughout the city. So what I want to do over the course of the next 10 or so minutes that I have is give you a brief bio about me, and I think many of you might know me, tell you why I'm running, and then talk about, or amplify, some of the issues that some of the other candidates talked about, and add a few of my own. So professionally, for the last 28 years, I worked for the United States Environmental Protection Agency. I'm the director of public affairs for them. It's the regional office in New England. What does that mean? That means that if there's an environmental or public health issue that's in the news on the front page of any newspaper in New England, or on the lips of a congressman or a mayor, then I and my team are usually in the middle of it. It's a fun, gratifying job, and I love it. I am also, for the last 17 years, I've been an adjunct faculty member for Suffolk University. I teach classes in both the graduate level as well as the undergraduate level. I taught an environmental policy and administration class. I taught another course in data to policy. So I see, I'm running in part, I see it through the lens of a teacher. In addition to that, well, let me backtrack one step. I should have done this at the outset. So I'm a product of the Quincy Public School system. I went to Quincy Public Schools, and I'm a, I went to, it's now called the Bernazani School, it was the Furness Brook School when I went there. Many years ago, I went to Central Middle School, the old one, not the new one. And I'm a graduate of North Quincy High School. But I did, as David indicated, I did go to Quincy High School for two years as well. So proud 1983 graduate of North Quincy High School. I went on, I got a bachelor's degree in business management from the University of Massachusetts, and then I went on and got a master's degree in public administration from Suffolk University because my passion is in public service and public administration. And that's the career that I chose. As I said, 28 years at the federal level. I've been involved there. I've been a teacher for 17 years. Civically, I've been involved and around with the city for many, many years. It was Larry Creashen, the former Ward Three City Councillor, that started the recycling commission. That was the first volunteer effort that I had. I've been on countless boards and commissions in the city of Quincy. I was the president of my neighborhood association 20 years ago, down in Wallaston, near Beach Woodwell School, the Ward Five Community Association, where we led the fight to clean up Wallaston Beach. I know Leo Kelly, your former councillor, led the fight to clean up Quincy Bay and Boston Harbor. And, you know, I've been proud to participate in all of those endeavors. In fact, 10 years ago, I founded the Friends of Wallaston Beach. And you see that they're involved in sponsoring summer activities all along the beach. We've done four different cleanups. We've got Coast Sweep coming up, September 30th, where we're going to have scores of volunteers scouring the beach, getting them involved. And we've tapped, the Friends of Wallaston Beach has tapped, Arbella Insurance, Stop and Shop, Granite Telecommunications, State Street, just like our school system taps corporate leaders. Civically, we've done that as well. So I have experience. Five minutes. And then I spent 14 years on the city council. I ran for Ward Five City Councillor, and I was a councillor in Wallaston and Quincy Center for 10 years. Love that job. I used to say, you can name a street in my district, I could tell you somebody that lives there, and the issues that are important to them. Why is that important? Because as a school committee member, that is the kind of ethic that I'm going to bring to the neighborhood schools. I will pledge to go to every neighborhood school and keep my ear to the ground and understand what are the issues through the lens of the parents and the administrators and the teachers, what's important. For four years, I was a city councillor-at-large and was involved in many, many of the important issues that are defined and shaped the city over the course of the last 14 years. I've been proud to vote on 14 school budgets that increased money and funding for teachers. I've been proud to vote for a new high school, for a new middle school, proud to vote on appropriation to move forward Sterling Middle School, proud to vote for improvements to windows and ceilings, and not ceilings, windows and roofs, and all other types of physical amenities outside the school. I chaired the education committee on the city council for a term as well, and I'm proud of that. But the difference between being a city councillor and being a school committee person is, there you're dealing with the issues outside the school. As a member of the school committee, you're dealing with issues within. And we're not talking about potholes, we're not talking about streetlights, we're talking about people. We're talking about your children. These are challenging issues. So when you talk about MCAS and assessment and some of the complicated issues that are out there, and how do we measure the success of a child, that's a pretty big deal that's not easily quantifiable. And I, you know, I like to say that you go to the doctor and you hope that they first diagnose before they prescribe, right? And that's my approach when I get, if I'm lucky enough to get to the Quincy School Committee. You know, Emily, of course, and Kathy do a tremendous job, and they're good listeners and learners. And when you serve, you understand. You know, I've been fortunate to serve on a deliberative body, so I understand what it's like serving on the city council. You know, it's good to have a checklist of things that I want to do for the schools, but you need to be able to work on the committee and work collaboratively to get some of these things done. So why am I running? There are two main issues, and they're my sons Brian and Scott. I have two boys in the system. I see it through the lens of a parent. And one of them is attending Quincy High right now, and the other is at Central Middle School. So that's kind of a unique... So that's kind of a unique perspective that I have of the candidates that are running today. I'm a parent of children currently in the system. I believe that that, and my 14 years' experience working in municipal government, understanding how it works, serving as an adjunct professor, understanding, working with, and it's different dealing with college students, whether it's undergraduate or graduate, than elementary or middle or high school students. But it's still through the eyes of a teacher that you see the world. So those are skills that I think that I bring, and I'm teachable. Some of the issues, of course, that have been discussed, I thought each of the candidates did a great job outlining some of them. All of them need to be looked at. Student achievement is number one. You know, the constant vigilance around security and safety of kids on so many levels is always critical. The opioid issue, you know, just personal security, some of the things that we see that happen all over. Literacy, computer technology, these are things that the school committee's been tackling and continues. Computer technology, recess. The importance of recess that I think several candidates mentioned. You know, we've got a pretty diverse student body here in the city.